Okay, I'd like to call on the Leominster Planning Board for August 22nd, 2022, 6:30. Okay, we have several public hearings, a continued public hearing for a definitive subdivision of Pier Street, map 575 parcel one.
And before we start this, as a matter of housekeeping matter, we need to say that Carol Victorioso watched the video of July 18th, and I have it in writing that she attended that or watched it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's correct, John. I did watch the July 18th meeting and the hearings.
Okay.
In its entirety.
And as you can hear, I know it's difficult because we're in this room. Carol's on the phone, and it'll be recorded, but it's probably going to be difficult to hear here on the audience. So if we feel we have to repeat anything, I'll do my best to repeat it. Okay? So we'll move forward with Pier Street. Representative first.
Good evening, everybody. Jamie Rowe from Haley Ward, representing the project. Mr. Fliss was able to attend the last meeting last Monday, but tonight he had a conflict, so I will be in his place. My understanding is that this public hearing process is well along, and we've submitted a few revisions to the plan. We've actually submitted some revisions to the plan based upon comments received from city departments. So we see it in a phone call from Elizabeth Wood today. She requested a response letter with a response dated 8/22/22 to what has taken place over time since our last meeting. And that letter was submitted to the planning department today. Do you have coffee? I can certainly go through this letter in its entirety and address all the concerns if that's what you'd like me to do.
Is that the letter of the concerns and all the department issues?
Yep.
Yes, please go through that.
Okay, fantastic. So a letter dated August 22nd, 2022. Compliance, the first section is the compliance with the subdivision control regulations. The first item is develop an impact statement. We did not submit a development impact statement for this development because it was only 12 or 13 lots, and it really isn't warranted at this time. We will be requesting a waiver, as we told the board at the last couple of public hearings. Plan documents. Please provide the following information on the plans. If you'd like to request a waiver for any of the following, please do so in writing. The scale of the plan should be one inch equals 40 feet horizontal. Please include a proposed name for a new street. Veteran names are preferred. Provide suitable space for signatures of the members of the board. There should be eight members to be signed on the plan, not five. And there should be a note on the plan that the manhole is not home of any adjacent or any land across the street from the subdivision. 8/22 responses. An updated waiver list has been prepared by this office and submitted to the planning board. The updated land plan will include eight signature lines and note has been added sheet 1 of 19 of the design plans regarding the adjacent land or land across the street. So that has been taken care of. For section 8.1, the results of PERC tests are required by the Board of Health. Our response, it really isn't a further response. Lots are town water and town sewer. There's really no reason to PERC test people on the individual lots. Finished inverts, finished invert elevations for the storm drains and sanitary sewers at a 50-foot interval, we will be requesting a waiver. It's not typical to do that on design plan, particularly labeled the rim of each, the elevation of each rim of each manhole or catch basin. We put an invert at that location as well. We do that manhole by manhole, so we will be asking for waiver for that as well. Soil evaluations and PERC tests, we went over. But this, I guess the DPW requested parts of heaps within the detention basin. And right now it's fully wooded, so what we are calling to do, like many projects we do, once all the trees are cut, and we have access to where the basin is going to be, we will do the PERC and deep once it's under construction. We'll invite the Board of Health and the City Mayor on the witness, and we'll submit those things out to the board as well. Typically, that's a condition of the board. With respect to mail delivery, we ended up having a meeting with the post office.
Yeah, there's a letter in front of the board to the matter, to that regard, regarding the discussion with the postmaster.
And let's...
It's dated August 11th. It's a thick paper.
Yep. Sullivan LaBelle issued an email, again, August 10th, 2022, to a bit of Bangor, which I believe we've told the planning board. Wes, Mr. Fliss, the location of the mailboxes is wood where they are located. Find the attached various choices of a centralized unit for mail delivery. So we got the approval of the post office for that item. Stormwater management system shall be designed and evaluated by the DPW to ensure adequacy. We have submitted the plans to them, and I'll go over those responses from the DPW separately. The subdivision submitted shall include a plan that indicates the maximum build-up of the property. If the plan proposal is a maximum build-up, indicated as such. We put a note on the plan that this is the full build-up maximum. Sidewalks are required. We told the board on July 5th, the sidewalks are provided on the southern side of the code line. Street trees are required. 8/22/22 response. The applicant will be using a mixture of maple trees throughout the development. The size of the tree is noted on the detail on sheet 18 of 19. So that's been taken care of as well. And the proposed trees are shown on the plan where they're located also. Cul-de-sac plantings are required. We are going to be asking for a waiver on this requirement. Typically, the DPW doesn't want planting within the cul-de-sac itself. It's typical cloud, so we are not going to be asking for waivers as well. Streetlights are required, and installations should be coordinated with National Bridge. Our response on 8/22/22, the streetlights haven't added to the design plans adjacent proposed items. There should be four throughout the whole project. And I believe the length of cul-de-sac is 1300 feet, and the equal space. That should be adequate. Police fire DPW shall evaluate the street configuration, see if it meets the city standards. We don't have any further comment, and we've asked all those boards to comment on the plans, and those comments have been received, and we take into consideration those comments too. Street lanes should not be longer than 500 feet unless in the opinion of the board. Greater length is necessitated by topography, other local conditions. We are asking for a waiver for the length of cul-de-sac. Again, 500 feet minimum is maximum. We're asking for 13, but we're limiting it to 12 homes. Typically, if you have 12 homes or less, shouldn't be a problem. Roadways shall be constructed to the full length and width according to the subdivision control regulations. Our response is the set line of the proposed roadway and right-of-way coincide with each other. Subdivision containing 12 or more lots shall have these two non-contiguous street connections with the street or streets existing or shown in the approved subdivision plan for which a performance guarantee has been filed. We originally had 13 lots on this subdivision, and we have the ability to subdivide through the A and R process, one of the lots that's currently on Pier Street. We're going to pull that out of the subdivision, submit an A and R plan when it's time for you to endorse the subdivision, so there'll only be 12 lots. A travel wave of 34 feet is required. We are proposing 28. We'll be asking for that waiver. I assume that's been discussed with the board at previous public hearings. Sidewalks shall be provided on one side of minor streets. Again, we're putting a sidewalk on the southern side of the main street. Eight-foot grass is required between the roadway and sidewalk. It's actually a five-foot grass strip that we are providing. An open space buffer area of 20 feet shall abut all adjacent properties in the subdivision. The area shall be planted with sufficient shrubs to create a visual screen and sound barrier between the subdivision and surrounding properties. In this particular case, it makes no sense to do that. The 20-foot strip that abuts all the abutting properties from our property is our own vegetation. It's wooden. It makes no sense to cut the trees down to plant shrubs. We'd like to keep it in its natural state. For a specific section, an open space area may be required to have maintenance provided for by covenants and agreements accepted with the board until the public acquires the property. Really, don't throw the comment. It's just not necessary. It's not a legitimate case. With respect to the building commissioner, the building commissioner, Peter Nile, submitted no comments. With respect to the fire department, they've asked for additional hydrants along the proposed roadway. We provided adequate updated design plans to the Deputy Chief Jonathan Contagent at the Fire Department. First review, he is satisfied with the revised plans. He issued an email to that effect dated August 15th, 2022, to the board. Would you like me to read that?
Yes, please.
Good afternoon, Wes. This satisfies the code. I'm satisfied with those measures taken. Short and sweet. Short and sweet.
And the board had a copy of that in front of them as well.
Sergeant Greg Robishaw of the police department had issues with traffic and speed issues along Pier Street. He issued a response on his email as well.
And you have that in front of your board. It's dated Friday, August 19th.
Good morning. This is a response. This is a response from the police department. Our police department has replied to your comments regarding traffic, regarding traffic study. Please review their responses below. The applicant responded that they feel the study is not necessary. They feel that the positioning of the new street on the corner with proximity of the hill would result in visibility for drivers both on Pier Street and the new street. He's concerned about traffic going around that curve. The response is 8/22. This office completed a site distance calculation for the proposed roadway looking in both directions as a driver would leave the development. The site looking to the south leaving the site meets the requirements of 335 feet. However, the site distance looking to the west does not meet that requirement at all. There are some saplings and overgrown trees at the corner of Pier Street and Drawson Street. If you cut those down, you get to 335 feet.
So to the right straight, and then the left, you're okay?
Correct. Yep.
But to the left, you get the hill.
You can see 335 feet, but that's the requirement that you have to see. And so when you look to the right going up towards Drawson at the corner, there's some saplings and trees. If they cut down, you get to 335.
Are those trees on your property?
City property.
City property, okay.
Yep. So those will be cut down. The applicant has agreed to two dangerous curve ahead signs and a solar-powered radar speed limit sign to the south of the project located on the Northbound Lane. The types of signs will be approved by the police department prior to purposing, and the location of the signs will be directed by the police department. Please refer to an email received from Greg Robishaw to Stephanie dated August 19th, 2022. Do you have that, Stephanie?
I have it right here. I want to...
Yep.
The board has it.
Perfect. After speaking with Mr. Fliss, it seems he and the property owner understand my concerns. The measures he and the owners put forth seem reasonable. He still has some concerns about being a dangerous intersection, but hopefully the signage will help reduce that. So again, I think the signage will help. I think the site distance modification to Drawson Street will help. The police sergeant didn't want to have a flashing sign that said, okay, say the speed limit is 30 miles an hour. He didn't want it to say it's 60 miles an hour. That's what you're traveling. He wants to say you're going too fast. Slow down. He thinks that's better than posting the speed that he's driving. So that's exactly what we'll do, and we've agreed to do that. Mr. Roseberry, the DPW, his comments were to provide concrete bounds at all easement floors. We will do that. The deep hole needs to be performed in the area of the proposed basin. We know that, but we'll do that as a judicial approval at the right time. The proposed sewer force main and manhole should run in the shoulder of Pier Street. No problem at all. Showed proposed street trees outside the right-of-way. We've done that in other subdivisions. No problem at all. And it's shown on the plan. Now, provide profile for stormwater pipes to the D basin. That's been revised on most revised plans. Provide sewer system details, road drain, subdrain, and areas of cut. That's been done. Provide access maintenance road to the basins. We showed it on the plan where it's going to be a grass strip that's to be moved all the way from the road all the way from the detention basin. And the lot five water service should be on the supply side of the hydrant. We made that change, and they're recommending a homeowners association to take care of the detention basin and the sewer force main. Very similar to what we did with Mr. Spotty's subdivision on the other side. It'll be done the same way. The assessors office had no comment. Conservation Commission had many comments, but because the meeting schedule is staggering, we bent before the conservation commission, and they've actually approved it and issued order conditions. So all their concerns have been met. Rita from the Board of Health, erosion control is addressed. Sleeve the water line when it crosses over the force main. Typically, we have an 18-inch separation according to the DPW recommendations. If you don't have that, then you have to encase the concrete or sleeve it. You meet that recommendation, so we don't have to do that. Now, the drainage area, silt filter into weapons. Hundred-foot buffer zone, use of silt control. Again, ONPOM has approved the project, and the erosion control has been approved by them as well. So we've responded to every comment that we've had. We've made every change, and...
On the one that you had with the Board of Health?
Yep.
You said that they requested a sleeve?
Yep. So our response to that was the plans, to the Board of Health's complete comment. The plans show erosion control barriers and erosion control blankets toward the site. Sewer will be installed 18 inches lower than the water at the minimum, at a minimum, at the crossings of the mains. So if the sewer line is below the water, 18 inches, you don't have to sleeve it.
Okay.
If it's not, typically, we don't sleeve it. We typically encase it in concrete. That's typically easier, but it's not necessary, isn't it, because of the offset?
Yeah.
We also submitted a letter dated August 22nd, 2022, to the planning board with an updated waiver request. I think we eliminated one because we have 12 lots, not 13. So the first waiver we're asking for is the DIS statement. Second waiver is the, one plan has a horizontal scale of 1 inch to 60 feet versus 40 feet. The reason for that is to get the show of the entire development on one plan and not to break it up into multiple plans. Finished invert elevations for storm drains and sanitary manholes. Instead of doing a 50-foot intervals along the line itself, traditionally, we put a JAM practice set and put a rim invert. The rim elevation and invert at each manhole and each catch basin throughout the profile. Cul-de-sac, cul-de-sac plantings, we're asking for that waiver. Dead-end street, not longer than 500 feet. Again, it's 1300 feet with 12 lots. Travel wave is required to the 34-foot feet gate. We're asking for 28 feet. And the open space buffer zone, we don't want to cut down trees for plant shrubs. So those are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven waivers and requests.
Okay. Good. Do you have anything else? I think you've covered it.
No, happy to answer any questions, Mr. Fliss.
Okay. I'll open up the audience. Do I have anyone in the audience ahead? You go. Okay, I'll ask again. Do I have anyone in the audience that wishes to ask a question or just make a comment?
We did have a letter from Fletcher Tilton that needs to be read into the record from Mark Elgadacue.
Read that into the record, please.
Sure. It's dated August 11th, 2022, regarding the definitive subdivision of land plan in Leominster, Massachusetts, of Pier Street. Dear Chairperson Souza and members of the board, please be advised that this office represents Massapog Development LLC, the abutter. The abutter has continuing property interests which abut the proposed subdivision made stop by Great Realty Trust. In fact, your board has previously approved the Woodlands of Massapog, the finished subdivision originally for BJ Realty Trust and found at the Worcester North District Registry of Dudes and Plan Book 492, Plan 22, which was subsequently developed by the abutter. My client has been unsuccessful to date in having any representative of Great Realty Trust respond to persistent requests for discussion regarding common interest in these two subdivisions. Beyond reaching out to the trustee, Gail Sebo, my client has been in touch with representatives of Witten and Bigham Associates, the design engineers, asking for the opportunity for such a discussion. To date, those requests have been revoked. I see that this matter is currently scheduled for the continued public hearing on August 15th by your board. Unfortunately, I am not able to attend that meeting due to your previous commitment. I would respectfully request that the board continue the public hearing on August 15th so as to permit the opportunity for my client and representative of Great Realty Trust to discuss the common interest these two adjoining subdivisions in my path. I would also appreciate your direction to the applicant to be in contact with the principal of my client, Greg Liscotti, at g@liscotti.com or 978-466-6661. Yours very freely, Mark Elgadacue from Fletcher Tilton, CC.
We just, like I said, we received this letter. I'm always concerned when a, another developer or a adjoining property has some legal issues that I don't fully understand. And I'd like to get this clean, if at all possible. Do you have any comments on this that can help us out?
It's unfortunate that the attorney that wrote the letter didn't go into detail what he's concerned about, right? So I don't know what's going on in his mind. I don't know what his concerns are. Greg Liscotti did reach out to me and ask me for the contact information, my applicant, the applicant of my client, and I shared that, and for whatever reason, they haven't kept together discussing issues. I will tell you that we designed the subdivision from the Woodlands of Massapog, right, of Greg Liscotti, who already stole it years ago. And it was Armin who basically said, let's do some planning. Let's see if this land ever gets developed. This land that is before you, it should, you should reserve a lot in that subdivision of Greg and do a connector, right? So that was put as a condition of the Greg Liscotti subdivision. That's not going to happen. It doesn't make any sense to connect these two subdivisions. There's a big weapon in the middle, and when you brought that up with the conservation commission, they're not going to allow it. So bottom line, if that connector road ever happened, it's probably not a discussion he wants to have with this land. There's another issue where there's a lot of land between the lots he created and Greg Liscotti's subdivision, a lot of it. And there's a separate parcel in between our subdivision and Greg's. Greg believes he knows that parcel, but that parcel is owned by, yep. So there's a little dispute going on about that. It doesn't matter. It's not how it's structured. It's not the body construction. So if he wants to talk about that, we can talk about that. The position of my client is, you want to pay the back taxes, that's all you want. It doesn't matter. So it's really a non-dispute, but it is separated from this. None of the proposed work or lots on the street as part of this project is part of that community of ours. We knew about it. We designed the route itself. It wouldn't be a problem. Don't know why somebody would make an issue. So that said, I don't think that's a problem with the project whatsoever.
Is that outside the detention pond?
Yep.
Is that all that wet land is down there?
Yep, it's all around us.
Is that this section down here? You probably can't see this wall around it. I can.
So this is it right here, this parcel here.
This parcel here?
Yep, right here, all the way down. Has nothing to do with anything over here. It's this parcel right here. What's that? Yep.
This parcel over here?
Exactly. Exactly. And see this stone wall? This parcel right here.
So that's outside of the...
It's outside of our development. We designed it that way specifically. We could have gotten more lots. We didn't. We just stayed on the land that was not disputed, knowing it could be an issue. Did the right thing. And I've had many conversations with Greg. Greg is a good guy, good client, but in this particular case, I don't agree with him. That said...
That would not, I'm trying to step ahead a little bit here. We know that, we know that it's not practical, and I really appreciated Armin and his ideas and what he wanted to do, and trying to relieve traffic from other stuff, but nobody wants to run traffic, more traffic down Pier Street. So really, that's not, you know, a good idea. It's an idea.
John? John, can I speak? This is Carol.
Yeah, Carol.
So it's, so Mr. Rowe, the first thing you said was that, you know, you didn't know what, they didn't go into detail about what the, about what the letter from Fletcher Tilton was concerned about, but then you seemed to know what it was concerned about.
So I don't...
So, yeah, so that's, so that's number one. So you did have, you did know what it was concerned about, and, and from the, from the letter that Elizabeth read, it sounded like your client will not reach out to Mr. Liscotti, a representative of Mr. Liscotti. And I'm of the opinion, and I think the board is too as a whole, that whenever there's a dispute or there's a concern with abutters, they usually meet ahead of time and speak. And that, and that doesn't seem like it happened at this point, whether you spoke to Greg or not. So I'm a little concerned about that because you may say that he's wrong, but I don't know whether or not he's wrong. And he couldn't be there tonight. I'm inclined to continue this if that's the case.
So to answer your questions, Carol, Greg Liscotti reached out to me, and we had So to answer your questions, Carol, um, Greg Liscotti reached out to me, and we had a conversation about this issue. Um, and he asked to be put in contact with, uh, the applicant, the, the landowner, uh, my client. And, uh, I passed along the information, um, and Greg called me back and said, I haven't heard. And, uh, he said, I'll pass it along again. And I know, I, I believe he also, uh, called, uh, Elizabeth Wood as well. So all we can do is pass along the information. Um, with respect to the letter, and I did have that conversation with Greg, so, uh, so I, I'm guessing that that letter written by the attorney, it could address that and might not. The letter that was just read into the record by the attorney at Til, uh, Tilton Fletcher, Fletcher Tilted, uh, doesn't really respond to any issue whatsoever. Just wants to get together with your abutter, with, with my client, their abutter. So I don't know what they mean by that letter. Uh, I suspect it's about the conversation I had with Greg, but I don't know.
Yeah, the letter in, in itself is, is kind of ambiguous.
Yep.
Saying they're looking for an extension.
Yep.
But it really doesn't tell us, he's an abutter and he has an issue, but I don't know what that issue is.
Well, I think the issue is pretty clear, because I think Mr. Rowe spelled it out. There's two issues.
Two questions, if I could, John.
Go ahead, Paul.
First, uh, did this letter says the attorney wasn't able to leave the master? Were they aware that the meeting was rescheduled today and did they have a conflict today as well?
Yes, they, they couldn't make it.
Tonight. They couldn't make it tonight either, and they said no further, and they said no further communication or?
They were, they were hoping that the meeting would be announced, what they, it's continued. They were hoping for a continuation and hoping that it was a future date that they could make it to the meeting.
And then second, if your applicant could speak as to why we haven't been able to have a connection?
Just for your, for your sake, my name is Gail Sebo, one of the applicants. We've had numerous conversations with Mr. Liscotti over many, many years. Our ownership of this disputed piece of property weighed in cases. We have other title searches done. We need to go to court to prove that. And honestly, at this point in time, we don't have the finances to take Greg Liscotti to court. We know he reties up to it. And I really, really, really was trying to do it. We have purposely cut down from like the potential thirty-four homes in this subdivision and now we're just put out to keep it simple, stay living away from the disputed piece of land. So it doesn't affect him at all. We don't, can't cross over the weapons to it. Um, we just feel like it's a continuation of something that he's been trying to do with us for a long time. We paid all the taxes on that land. That land is a parcel of light size. It means this parcel too large. And over all these years, we've paid the taxes. So I feel unfair from this point. I mean, no, I didn't have to do it anyway.
So, so this?
Feel that to continue is just, uh, let's continue.
The only, the only problem that he may have with it, I guess, is it would land lock and potentially develop a whole piece of land which he may not even own, is, is that?
Yeah.
Well, that.
Kind of lose the, sort of buy our land back.
No, see, that's just the opposite, he's not landlocked, because the, the piece of.
Lot and?
No, 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 because his piece of property, unlike Massapog, there is an open lot that has access to that land. Okay, so that's what we discussed. Years ago, we thought there was a potential erosion there. Because the closed proximity could be a street. If it was feasible, yeah, in the development, uh, we'd like to see it.
So what's the connection to this subdivision?
It's not, because it's, it's beyond, you got the wetlands, you got this piece of property is outside of the subdivision.
John, one additional problem. So if I understand correctly, you're not interested in having further conversations with the attorneys in the letter, and that's why the connection has been given up?
So, so that's one issue that I, we brought up, because I did have that conversation with Greg. The other issue is the connector road. Um, and I did have this conversation with Greg as well, that this could possibly open up and free up that lot that's been restricted all these years for future development of a single-family home. And I hope we can go through that process for that subdivision, get that lot put back on the horse unrestricted, so we can build a house.
We've already looked at that as a deviation from a, uh, from a approved subdivision.
Yep.
And, uh, that is, that is something we believe we can do.
Good, that's true.
Okay. So the process to open up that other lot is available?
Yep.
Okay?
Yep, fantastic. So again, in the letter that was written, doesn't have any specifics in it, but those are the two issues I know of that we could refer to.
Yep, but I, I want to know, but I would be heard from your end of what those two issues are. I don't know what, I don't know what is taken on that, or what the attorney says. And I, it's been, it's been the standard of the policy of this board to hear both sides of it. And if they couldn't be present today, I want to hear the other side. May, maybe he'll concede to it, maybe you're right, I don't know.
I would have, I would have, Carol, I, I would have appreciated the letter being more specific, that's all I'm saying.
They're saying they couldn't be present, so then, I, then why didn't you call, why didn't you reach out to Mr. Liscotti or to your attorney and say, what's the issue?
So I, I, I didn't receive a copy of the letter. Um, I was told about the letter when I came to the board tonight, Carol. Um, so I didn't have an opportunity to call, uh, the attorney.
Well, now you'll have an opportunity to call, because I'll, I'll, I'm requesting a continuance. I think that, I'm only one of the eight, but that's what I'm requesting.
Yep.
Okay.
So, um, this, this, uh, party has a right to do what they want with their, their own property. The abutter, the abutter may be deliberately ambiguous in this letter. The abutter did get an extension just through the fact of the extent, because you know, you're right that they should be heard. How long, I don't know how long we should, I don't know if it's fair, if this party didn't bring it out, but I guess we should hear it. If the issue was about a piece of property, not property, right?
And just another point of protocol, from a staff's standpoint, everything and all the amendments for the subdivision and all the waiver requests were due to staff, but Friday, July twenty-ninth at noon, and they weren't received by that deadline.
This letter wasn't received by that deadline?
No.
If I may, I, I think this project looks really good, and I have no concerns about the project itself. However, I do agree with Carol that, that it is our practice to straighten these things out. And I would hate for a project that, to me, looks really good to be besmirched by some kind of issue that we may have been able to resolve before moving forward with it.
And I, and I'd like to make it clear, I, I, I thought of most of the projects, like, like, um, Cal just said, I, I think it's a great project, but it, I just want everybody to have an opportunity to be heard. That's all I'm asking.
I'm sorry, I haven't, uh, time being here, Carol.
She says she wants everyone to have an opportunity.
Yep. Okay.
I don't know, how many opportunities do we give them to continue? Given until the next meeting or?
Was there a letter after the meeting we had two months ago?
No, no, there we go.
Did you pay him? He paid four days before.
When was the first time you came in?
Yeah, it's been a couple, two, three months.
Yeah. I don't know. It's, I'm in a corner whether or not it, if it closes hearing or not.
Well, my, my recommendation is if, if there's going to be additional information submitted to the board after tonight as a result of any conversations that take place, the public hearing has to remain open.
Yes.
In my opinion.
I, I think, I think I, I.
I mean, you want it done clean, don't you?
I, I want it clean, okay?
I mean, you don't want a lawsuit after we approve it, so.
We approve it.
The lawsuit slapped on it.
If we don't cover all the bases, we open ourselves up to land law, court lawsuits. And we'd put, so then we'd finish that. So what I'd like to do is, advantage to both sides, is to continue it for one meeting. Okay, so our next, that very next meeting, and at that point, and then we make every effort, okay? And if you'd like myself or any other member of the, this board to be involved offsite, uh, with between yourself and Mr. Liscotti, uh, offer you that, that we could try to mediate this situation and get it straightened away, because I want it clean. I appreciate the work that you've done. I'm looking at the project and, and the land and the area. Um, I wish I was a little younger, because I'd look to buy a house in there. But I'm looking to get to smaller places, it's not a random thing. So I think that the opportunity and the work that's been done, uh, is, is good. Uh, what's been done by Mr. Rowe is very good, and, uh, I just want to take this, I try to be cautious and to make sure that we, we cross all the Ts and dot the Is. So, uh, at this point, I would request that the, that I get a motion, uh, to continue this to our next meeting, which will be.
September nineteenth, we have six-thirty open, the first, first lot.
September nineteen. And then, uh, Mr. Liscotti, we make every effort to be there, because we will make a decision that evening.
Should, should we?
Or make an attempt to make, yeah, I can't, I can't say that.
Should we attempt to contact Mr. Liscotti's representative and ask for either in-person representation or detailed explanation of his concerns by that date?
We will do that.
Yeah, I will reach out to the representative.
We will do that. Okay? So, so I'm asking for that motion. Have a motion.
Second, right.
A motion made in second to continue it for one meeting, and then we make every effort to, uh, mitigate the situation between, uh, Liscotti Development and this development. Okay? Wrong, wrong, for the wrong part.
Patrick Perla.
Yes.
Paul Wiser.
Yes.
Carviter Ersow.
Yes.
Tom Thernan.
No.
Jason Burey. Dean Boyer.
Yes.
Sal Chetoni, excuse, John Souza.
Yes. Thank you for your efforts, and we'll get it done.
Okay. Continued public care of the city council petition, twenty-twenty-two. Overflow lots were amended zoning ordinance pertaining to parking of unregistered vehicles. Uh, Jason took this on with some changes, and I'd like to have him bring us up to date on what's happening there.
Uh, I don't have the wording in front of me, but, um.
Right here, see, you have it.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, so I attempted to rewrite or reword the definition in such a way, uh, as to make it more generic. We were talking about. We, we were being very specific in the, in the types of properties or the types of businesses that were allowed to store vehicles. And, uh, when we heard from the licensing commissioner, um, he was talking about all of the possible loopholes or all of the ways that, uh, business owners could fall into rags. A, a, a business owner, for example, who's storing cars on leased land, um, with no signage, and, and he would have no way of knowing who it was that was storing these vehicles, and he would have to put it on the, on the property. So I just, I took an attempt at rewriting this to make it more, more generic. You know, define any sort of parcel that's, um, storing vehicles in excess of those that are already, um, defined under existing regulations. So you guys can see what you're doing.
Okay, I'll read it as it, uh, if we have the definition today. Section twenty-two dash, in, in the definitions. A tow yard, an outdoor storage facility for the temporary storage of towed vehicles, does not include disposal, permanent disassembly, salvage, or accessory storage of inoperable vehicles. Requires yard security fencing, proper lighting and screening from abutting properties. Screening may be in the form of privacy fencing or landscape design. The second part, vehicle storage lot. Any city lot or parcel used for the storage of unregistered vehicles, such as a tow yard, vehicle overflow lot, repair facility, or other purpose, requires yard security fencing, proper lighting, screening from the abutter properties. Screening may be in the form of privacy fencing or landscape design. Okay? What this does is, it gives us an opportunity to try to control these, because there were quite a few lots in the city areas where people are just taking, and I got a phone call on one yesterday, I haven't had a chance to look at it, where again, people are just taking some empty property and they're putting a bunch of vehicles on it. And those vehicles are, uh, some of them are, uh, to be reused, some of them are by used car dealers who don't have enough property for their cars, so they're putting them there. And some of them are just, uh, people who have, uh, you know, too many cars in their lot, so they're, or a motorhome, and they're putting it someplace else for, for long-term storage or short-term storage. So we're looking to control that, because in the process of controlling that yard, because it gives us where you can do it, is that becomes a parking facility. And when you have to park a vehicle, okay, and I think I want to add something to this, is when you, when you park a vehicle, it's a parking lot. And then this would be considered, in either case, a parking lot. And with it being a parking lot, I looked up the definition for parking lot. It's a temporary storage of vehicles. So if you'd have a parking lot, and in doing so, it's ten cars, and that meets our requirement today, requires a site plan. And in that site plan, it require, uh, your proper drainages, it would require, you know, the, uh, the tubinus on your drainage, it requires oil separators, okay, and the safety, and also, and in being that, also there's requirements where you get into conservation or close to wetlands or into the, uh, or into, uh, on a flood plain. So, uh, I think this is good, and I just want to add that the, that the, in, that the, in both cases, that it would be considered a parking, uh, area, okay, a parking lot. And, uh, with that, we can go forward. Anybody have any other comments on this? So, good, do I have any comments from the audience, anyone out there that has issues with this? Like I said, this has been going around, we've tried to work with the, with the, uh, the license commission, uh, for a while now, and, uh, I think with their imports, uh, this would help. commission for a while now and I think with their imports, this would help. Okay? And I've talked a number to the city councilors and they're, you know, they're, they're at odds because they, they've tried to fight away the controls of this rampant storage of different areas. So I'll ask one more time. Is there anyone else in the audience who should speak? If I have any board member who have any comments?
We move to close the hearing?
Second. Okay. Do I have a motion to close the hearing? Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion?
Second, second.
We didn't second it. All in favor, say aye.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Patrick Kerla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Caravaterioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
South Chaconia excused. John Souza.
Yes.
Okay. 6:45. Open public meeting for site plan application for 640 North Main Street, map 201, parcel 1. Yes, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair members of the board. My name is Rafer Calabrain. With me today is Brian Goodrow from Hancock Associates. The proposal we have before you today is rather straightforward. It's a, it's an existing bowling alley, ice cream shop, and mini golf, which many, everyone knows in the community. It's been there for a long time. It's set back off the main roadway. It's a long entranceway. And our proposal, very simple, to remove the ice cream shop and the mini field, create additional parking at about a 4,000 square foot addition to the property, all one floor, for a total office space of about 22,000 square feet. This is for the Department of Child and Family Services for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They have a state-of-the-art new type of interior use and they call it touchdown stadium-type use. So they don't have what we have traditional offices. Everything is more, you move from room to room, small conferences, meetings, areas, things like that. Very few private offices. There are a few. And the, the proposed use would essentially expand the parking on both sides of the building along the front. As you see, and I think this is worth a little bit misleading, the parking, we're providing 158 parking spaces, which is substantially more than we need on your cover, substantially more than will ever be used. But unfortunately, when a bid comes out through DCAM Department, the issue bids for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they put specs in there and you have to comply with the specs in order to be a qualified bid. So that was, those were the requirements that came out and that's the reason why we have 158 spaces when, as you'll see in a moment when I walk through the use, there'll be a far, far, far fewer needed parking spaces based upon occupancy. So again, it's 22,305 square feet. It's a four-acre parcel, there's an abundance of area here. The nice part is it's set back into the hill so that you really don't see a lot of it from the street. The building will have a new facade and will be done over with a, you know, right now it's a multicolored, very outdated-type structure, along with a more linear sign out front. New, new blacktop throughout and, you know, obviously travel lanes, parking, handicapped, cesspool, all those things. In your review you did a while back, you had a few issues that were brought up and I just want to briefly run through those because I think we addressed them all and I'll come back to the traffic in a minute.
As a matter of fact, there's a memo dated August 17th that was in response to all your edits and changes. You got that? The board has it in front of them.
Oh, you have it in front of them? Okay, fine. Then I won't, I believe we've addressed all of the, all of the requested, thank you very much, all of the requested comments. In regards to the parking, so the proposed member of...
17th.
It's my staff memo. It wasn't in your packet, it was in front of you when you sat down.
Got you. Sorry. Oh, okay.
So, and I apologize for the late submittal for the requested traffic, waiver of the traffic study that we submitted today. And I think that was, that's clearly our fault, a misunderstanding. But let me just walk you through what the proposed uses. So they have a hybrid model which has been implemented in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts since September of 21. And that model is indefinite, meaning there's no set end date to it. They anticipated something that has actually worked very well and that will be kept in place for the Department of Child and Family Services. Their peak number of employees to arrive at any given day is 80. They anticipate there's a 20% on any given day of individuals don't show due to sick time, vacation time, and client important visits because part of their mandated services to be out at the homes and the ports and, you know, moving about. So they have this hybrid model with a peak of 80, so we're talking 64 employees. 30 visits would be the peak visits on a day, then client visits coming into, into the facility. Again, a lot of visits are done, preferably done at the household for the obvious reasons, they get to know each other, observe what's happening there. The 30 potential clients on any given day on a peak are dispersed fairly evenly during the day, a little bit more weighted toward the midday, toward after-school time during that time period. So even if you took it, you're talking about 90, if you had max of 64 plus a 30, 94 individuals occupying the space. I'd suggest to you, and I try to just walk through the current use in comparison. The current use had 24 bowling alleys, four to six per alley. It had bowling, I'm sorry, pool and other games. It had mini golf, it had ice cream. The demand was well over 150 plus and one of the things we went through and behind this was talking to the previous owner and good for them, they did quite well and they had big demands oftentimes during peak traffic periods. So this is a substantial reduction in what has been there historically, but more importantly, and this is where I really think emphasis should be looked at, there's been a little change in the dynamics there in the sense that up on the, when you're looking at the property to the right is Venture Family Services, a very small operation, it's a day program. They provide services, low use. As far as volume, they're closed by 4:00 PM, which means their traffic generally moves in the three, between 3:00 and 4:00, which is earlier between peak time, 4:00 to 6:00. Next door is the Japanese-Chinese restaurant, which peak time is generally after this lets out and we're not open, the Department of Child and Family Services is not open on the weekends. So there's ample overflow parking for that type of use, which is really kind of a nice, really complimentary-type uses so that this space really enhances what's there and I would call it the three, you know, the three businesses which all have access out to the roadway, there's access through the parking lot, all three, all three ways to enter the property. So from our perspective, we, the purpose for the request for the waiver is because it's a substantial decrease in what's been historically.
Did you email me that waiver?
I did. I emailed it to you this morning for, I mean, today during our conversation about...
Okay.
1:00 or something.
Okay.
Yeah. But I have, I can provide a copy I have here.
Okay, give that to a lady.
I can print it out, too.
And, and the information I'm giving you is all in the letter. Basically, it talks about, and all of this data is direct from the Department of Child and Family Services from the director statewide. They run, this model that they're implementing now is a spinoff of a model that we did in one in Redfield, Massachusetts, and they're replicating this, they call, don't ask me who's thinking, but the touchdown...
Touchdown.
Touchdown program. It's, it's just a pod-type setup for more, you know, modern model office, because a lot of people don't come in to sit down, they have laptops, they meet people, they go in little work groups, collaborative-type office.
Instead of key with us.
Yeah, yeah, kind of like, with, you know, power suits, group meetings, things like that. All of the building is defined as office use. There is no other use. With regards to all of the other issues related to number of parking spaces, tie-in with water, storage overload, all of those have been addressed in the amendment. Mr. Goodrow is present with you, can you answer any technical issues? For those of you, I'm sure you're all familiar, this is a fairly popular spot. This is what it looks like with a setback coming through the front. The only one thing I should point out, I don't know if you can see it from there, but on this side of it, we propose just putting a little parking berm there so the traffic flows on the side closest to the Chinese restaurant, and that's just for traffic flow. It makes a lot more sense to have it wide open and it aids to the parking. So with that, I'm there.
You can just turn that a little bit so the TV camera can see it.
Yeah. So I would ask if you would accept the waiver, request for a waiver for the traffic study. I did speak with three traffic engineers, all of whom were booked for months, and all of them told me that this, based upon these changes of uses, it's, they actually see a decrease. They don't anticipate there's any issues, but I, you know, I can only represent to what I was told from speaking with them. And the, to try to get one would be quite some time out. The one thing I will, and I know it's not yours and I apologize for this, but we are under a little bit of a deadline with state compliance because there's strict deadlines on these, certainly not the board's issue, it's our issue. And delay in getting approval puts the construction timeframe, they have to get out of another space and there's, as you imagine, that's complicated, so...
That does with the state.
They're pretty tough on their deadlines. So I'm happy to answer any questions or Mr. Goodrow can answer any technical issues, questions you have.
I just have one question. The Board of Health comment about the indoor air quality testing, in your response on August 4th, you said testing will be done. I don't see it included in the August 17th.
You know...
So that means it's getting done and it's okay?
No, well, this is, I was gonna actually, I'm glad you brought it up because I did forget to address it. I don't know, we're, this is an entire guy, so it's going down to the studs. So everything's brand new in there. I wouldn't imagine air quality to be an issue.
Okay.
So, yeah, I got that. It's brand new, I mean, literally, and we, you probably haven't seen it, it's been by the receive, how many dump trucks, I mean, I'm sorry, dumpsters are out there as we've been in the process of doing that as we speak.
Yeah.
It's brand new HPA system. It's all standard and the compliance for the state is the highest of all as far as air quality with all those standards.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak on this subject? Any questions? I'll answer a second time. Anyone else wish to ask any questions or make any comments? Good and last time.
Close the hearing?
Second. I have a motion made to close the hearing. Do you have any discussion on that? Okay, it's Pat before. Okay? All the vote call.
No, I just said Pat, second to the...
She wanted to know.
Yeah.
No.
Sorry.
Roll call. Patrick Kerla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Caravaterioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
South Chaconia excused. John Souza.
Yes.
Okay. We go into the regular meeting. Roll call please.
Patrick Kerla.
Here.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Caravaterioso.
Here, by phone.
Tom Hergen.
Here.
Jason Parre.
Here.
Dean Valier.
Here.
South Chaconia excused. John Souza.
Yep. Minutes of previous meetings. June 6th.
Yes.
I just got one comment when I was, it really looked good to me, except for right on the beginning, it said, um...
Miss Souza.
Yeah.
It does.
We just have to make sure you're awake when you...
I do read these and I caught that with Miss Souza and it says I was acting, so I didn't want to know if somebody had to tell me.
You were.
So, so I request a change there.
I need to approve with the recommended change.
Second.
I have a motion made and second is to approve with changes. Call for the vote.
Patrick Kerla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Caravaterioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
South Chaconia excused. John Souza.
Yes. July 18th, 2022. Your same comment.
Miss Souza, it's a template, that's it. Motion approved.
Yeah, good, you're precious.
We did the stick through our last time, we see it was Mr. Vittorio, so we had to, it was your turn.
Okay.
Motion to approve with small change.
Second.
Motion made and second. Vote call please.
Patrick Kerla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
I have the abstain.
Caravaterioso, you were not present or delighted to, but you saw the tape. Did you want to vote?
If I can, sure. I saw the whole thing. Thank you. Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
South Chaconia excused. John Souza.
Yes.
Phone submitted. A and R for 43, State Street Road, map 325, parcel 52.
Did, everybody in front of them should have have an email dated August 12th from Eric Lynn, his requesting to withdraw his, in our application without prejudice.
Okay.
So moved.
Motion made and second.
Started.
Okay. To withdraw F case without prejudice. Vote call please.
Patrick Kerla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Caravaterioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parre.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
South Chaconia excused. John Souza.
Yes. A and R for Peterson Street, map 547, lot 15A.
Yes, I have it.
Okay.
So before you, you have a, Jamie Rowe, Haley Ward, before you have an A and R plan submitted to the planning board on a piece of property currently owned by Wayne Schofield off of Peterson Street. On this piece of property, there are three cell towers and we created parcels of land around the cell towers with access easements according to the lease agreements and the deeds of record. And we're asking the planning board to endorse this as an A and R plan. It clearly marked on the plan that these parcels being created are non-bulldogged lots. It's one of the exceptions within the A and R rules and regulations. You can create a parcel labeled a non-bulldogged lot and that basically takes care of this action.
But it's already built up.
Yeah, it's a utility. Think of it as a utility. And quite frankly, we've done this on other lots in the area for sewer pump stations, water pump stations, et cetera. We size them very small. We don't make them an acre. The minimum area is an acre. We don't make them an acre to put a pump station on a cell tower. We create a small parcel. That's, that's what we're doing here. That's all.
Yeah, I got a legal opinion on this. Yeah, I got a legal opinion on this. Date of July 26th. It's in your book, right?
Okay, yes. So I agree with that. I don't have any problem. Any other comments to make? What limits? It's.
On the two doors? Second.
I have a motion made and seconded to undo it. Okay. Any discussion on that? Do you have another call for a roll call?
Patrick Herla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parra.
Yeah.
Dean Valier. Sal Chaconi excused, John Siza.
Yes.
Thank you.
It says it right here.
Carry it back.
I made it on there.
That's what I did.
They revised it to make it on there.
Site plan application, 670 Central Street, map 582, parcel 18 and 19, trucking and transportation building. This will be scheduled.
So I move on the schedule of September 19th at 6:35.
Second. September 19th at 6:35.
Is this ever?
Um, for.
We just scheduled 6:30.
670 Central Street?
Yeah. No.
We have 6:35 open, yes.
Okay. I have a motion.
But, um, hold on. I just need to make sure we have the advertising deadline because there's a special permit here.
How many days you need?
I need to put it in.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight?
September 19th, so it has to go in the 12th and the 5th. It means it has to get sent out next, by next week. Yeah, we can do it. The 19th.
Okay, I have a motion to be scheduled September 19th at 6:35. Any discussion? For site plan. Uh, roll call please.
Patrick Herla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, John Siza.
Yes.
Then I move to schedule a special permit for 670.
I can read it. 3.4, special permit application for 670 Central Street, map 582, parcel 18 and 19, trucking and transportation.
I move to schedule it September 19th at 6:36. Second.
6:36?
Since they go together, discuss.
Yeah, we'll discuss it together.
I just want to make sure I got it right.
Okay, motion made and seconded for September 16th, uh, September 19th at 6:36. Roll call please.
Patrick Herla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi excused, John Siza.
Yes. Okay, all business. Continued definitive subdivision for Pierce Street, map 575, parcel 1. This is being continued. City Council petition, 4.2, city council petition, 20-22. We owe four lots to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to parking of unlit vehicles. Plan board to repetition city council. So with this here, uh, we had the hearing earlier when I talked, and I said, I just wanted to add at the end that this area could be considered a parking lot, and that would be on both sections. Okay, and that way you reduce, okay.
So we're making an edit to this language?
Yeah, add to this amendment.
Okay.
I discussed it, yes, because I discussed it in the hearing. Okay, so it was discussed in the hearing, and now we vote on whether we want to do that lot. Okay.
John, do we need to vote on the amended language and then on the entire?
That is correct.
I make a motion to add the amended language of this should be considered. Well, this is considered.
Okay. I just need to make sure.
Please.
Okay, I need to make sure I have it exactly as you intend. So under definitions, you're gonna, under tow yard and under vehicle storage lot, you're adding this sentence?
Yeah, this area would be considered a parking lot.
This area would be considered a parking lot under.
Okay, and there goes the vote.
As opposed to a storage lot?
Well, it is. They call it vehicle storage lots, and but by calling it a parking lot, okay, it's called, it's vehicle storage and it's a parking lot, and then they have to meet the criteria of parking. That way we're not to write another whole section on the criteria for that law.
Okay, I got it.
Okay. So I want to take them, you know, I got them definitions. I want to take the tow yard first, and we made that motion, that section, okay, to accept that with the amendment. The motion by Pat seconded by Paul. Okay, call for a roll call on that.
Patrick Herla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser. Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Dean Parra, Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, John Siza.
Yes, the second part, vehicle storage lot with the same amendment.
Same move.
So. Uh, motion made and seconded. Call for a roll call.
Patrick Herla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, John Siza.
Yes. Thank you.
But it's gonna be one petition, right?
New business, site plan application, 688 North Main Street, map 201, parcel 1. Do I have any, do I have a motion? Do I have any, oh, we gotta deal with the waivers. We'll take each waiver. You wanna take them in blocks, or do you want to take them individually?
You have to do each one individually.
I thought we had to complete, yeah, let's go main individual. Elizabeth, did you read them or can you get them up properly?
Um, sure, it's sections 22-63.1.1.1 stating that no parking is permitted within the required front yard setback of the structure. Physical configuration of the lot creates a hardship for this property owner and meets this requirement. The planning board may allow parking in the frontlet screen as noted in subsection 22-63.1.1.1.
And this is primarily a front yard parking zone, and you can see with these buildings, it's not practical. Okay.
Make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant the waiver? Okay, a motion made and seconded. Roll call please.
Patrick Herla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parra. Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, John Siza.
Yes.
Actually, I'm going off my list, and there was a separate list that the applicant had. And I put it away. Do you have that? Do you have that ready? I just want to make sure we covered all the bases. Section 22-60.1.1 stating that all property boundaries of and use and ownership of adjacent land and location of use of any building thereon within 300 feet of the boundary of the subject property must be displayed.
I think they did that. Because you peppered all of it. Well, we gave you the waiver.
It says they revised the plans and they put it on the plan set, so I don't think we need that.
No, that's their provided, yeah.
Okay, moving on. Section 22-52.8.3.2 stating in two or more strips to parallel to the spaces and extending from the aisle serving one row of spaces to the aisle serving a row of spaces. There must be planted in each strip at least three trees, and in all such strips, not less than one tree for every 10 parking spaces in the interior part of the parking lot in the HCO district for every eight parking spaces in the interior part of the parking lot elsewhere. The trees must be spaced so that some part of the parking space is not more than 30 feet from the tree.
Make a motion to grant this waiver. And second?
Motion made and taken, grant the waiver on the tree. Roll call please.
Patrick Herla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, John Siza.
Section 52.8.1.
Yep. Section 22-52.8.1 stating that except in the HCO district, parking areas within 25 spaces must be separated by landscape islands of eight to 10 feet width. In addition, a minimum of one shade tree must be planted for every three parking spaces required or to be built within appropriate locations on the end along the street, front and pedestrian ways. Streets planted within the parking areas must be planted in protected peruse spots, and at least six feet square in area.
Make a motion to grant this waiver. And second again?
Motion made and seconded to accept the waiver. Roll call please.
Patrick Herla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen. Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, John Siza.
Yes.
Okay, section 22-52.8.3.2. In two or more strips parallel to the spaces and extending from aisles serving one row of spaces to the aisles serving another row of spaces, there must be planted in each strip at least three trees, and in all such strips, not less than one tree for every 10 parking spaces in the interior part of the parking lot in the HCO district for every eight parking spaces in the interior part of parking lot elsewhere. Trees must be spaced so that some part of the parking space is not more than 30 feet from a tree.
We did this one already.
We're listed.
Oh, you did.
Sounds familiar.
It was number three.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, it's listed on my end, it's listed in theirs too, so you got that.
Yeah, that was on the waiver. That's all the waiver, right?
Um, there's the traffic, the traffic study.
The traffic study, yeah.
Section. It's on the right here. Section.
22-45.1.
Section, 22-63.2.3. That requires a traffic impact statement.
Okay.
I agree with the assessment that this is not going to negatively impact the traffic as the business is coming and going during the workday and not necessarily during peak traffic hours.
I would move to grant the waiver. Second.
Motion made and seconded to grant the waiver. Roll call please.
Patrick Herla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, John Siza.
Yes. Okay, accept the project with waivers. Suboot.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the project with waivers. Roll call please.
Do I have conditions?
Do I have any other requirements that we have to address?
Do I have any conditions by imperative?
Oh, departmental, yeah, sorry about that. I'm jumping ahead.
Subject to all imperative. Wait. I don't think there are any. Do you want to put in a subject to all imperative conditions?
It's fine. Yeah.
Oh, outstanding.
Outstanding.
Because they're so good.
I don't think you're ready.
Yeah.
And then the boilerplate point that Elizabeth will check, or not Elizabeth will check, the director of planning will check to make sure that all conditions have been met for the subject area.
That's the motion. Second.
Except the motion is stated. Okay, any discussion on that? Katie. Off the roll call.
Patrick Herla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Vittorioso.
Yes.
Tom Hergen.
Yes.
Jason Parra.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sal Chaconi, excuse, John Siza.
Yes. Okay. Motion carries. Good luck, guys.
I took notes on your waivers then. Can I keep that so I can give my notice?
Sure, thank you very much.
6.1, Southgate Business Park, final approval, planning board review. All documents provided and made of determination are final endorsement of my law.
Do we want to bring up the issue of the butter, or do we? How about the top, or the top of the legal council?
Well, I'll address it, but we really can't. We had, we had an arbiter come to us this last week, I guess, and in that case, they said that they had bought the property, and I'm not sure which property they bought, as in a butter, to this, and they were never notified by us or the, uh, the applicant. And we went back, and it was true, we did send out letters to as the certified list from the assessors, and that's what we have to go by. And evidently, um, this gentleman was not on that list. But we've gone through the process, we have no recourse as a planning board to do anything because we're at this point, and sign the my laws, we voted on this. So that gentleman notified that his only recourse would be to land courts if he wanted to, um, get something changed on this plan. So just to let you know that, uh, really, the board's hands were tied. We had no, we have no recourse to go back after. We have done a final vote, and we've done everything. So it's unfortunate that with newspapers, that people don't even read the newspapers anymore. And we have a very hard time getting our butters notified. And we do all we can, and I think we have to make a very conscious effort to keep that over the subject as best we can. So, yeah, gentlemen, good luck with the future endeavors. So I think, I don't think there's any vote required. I think it's just to sign the my law draft. So just request everybody before you leave, the my laws are there, you have to sign all of them.
And there's only five spaces, so you'll have to kind of.
Add to it.
Add your name.
And you gotta use that black pen. Do you have a special black pen?
Yeah.
Okay. Katie Lane, Licket Place Subdivision, request for bond release. Do I have any, anybody comment here on this?
Um, staff has commented that I checked with DPW and had them do an inspection, and there's a memo in front of you with a whole chain of conversations I've had with DPW. The most recent comment is dated. The most recent comment is dated August 22nd, and the final determination from the DPW is that it's safe to release the $75,000 and retain $41,387.64, or whatever is remaining in interest. And that'll be retained for outstanding improvements that include constructing an access road through the drainage unit, doing legal work, and adjusting the water main unit. So that's.
Mr. Rowan, do you have any comments on this?
Exactly what Elizabeth said. I had a conversation with John Rosecrick as well. He confirmed that the remaining balance in the account after this is released will cover the remaining items to be done.
So that's all we're looking for, you know? Want to hold them up too hard, but I'd like to get a timeframe at all. Do you have any timeframe on with the? That's yours, huh? Okay. Because the cave lane has been hanging for a long time.
We want to get it accepted.
Yeah, and. A lot, a lot of work has been done, but we'd still like to get that road accepted and get the drainage calculations taken care of. So a motion would be to.
I make a motion to release the $75,000 and retain the $41,000. Second.
The motion is made and seconded to release the $75,000. Any other discussion? Here now, a call for a roll call.
Patrick Kerla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Torriello.
Yes.
Tom Harrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sacha Pony, excuse, John SZA.
Yes. Nomination of Dean Valier to Montezak Regional Planning Commission as a representative. This is the second of two postings. You have to.
You're a winner.
You're a winner. Motion is in order.
Just make a motion.
Motion made by Dean Valier. For the, for the, for the roll call please.
Patrick Kerla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Torriello.
Yes.
Tom Harrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry.
Yes.
Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sacha Pony, excuse, John SZA.
Yes. Director of report.
Okay, I have an update on the warehouses that are one, well, there's one airport road in Crawford Street that is under review by Pittsburgh and Lunenburg that we've discussed. And then there's another facility, an out-of-facility that is already been, it's already being constructed in Pittsburgh. And based according with the mayor's office, he wanted to move forward with the traffic study on the impact of both warehouses on Lemonster. And we got three quotes on that. The mayor went with the lowest bidder, and that was Kim Lee Moore, led by Bill Scully. And I talked to Kim Lee Moore this morning, and they said they're going to have a timeframe of early September, right after Labor Day, they're doing their counts, their traffic counts. And they'll have the report wrapped up by the end of September, and I'll have that paper.
So very good.
And then I got another memo. I don't know if the board, I wanted to bring to the board's attention this. I called Pittsburgh, and I encouraged them to communicate with us about any future developments, and we got a card from Pittsburgh. And it says they're proposing a Dunkin' Donuts on 125 Main Street in downtown Business Zoning District. So that's the notice from Pittsburgh. I didn't know if the board wanted to come in on Dunkin' Donuts in that area.
Main Street in Pittsburgh.
A sarcastic card? That's not going to work my cards.
This is an official card that says they've approved.
They're being officially sarcastic?
Yeah, I don't think Main Street in Pittsburgh will think of something.
I think we're all set on that.
Compared to the 800,000.
I'm just glad that we got something from them. I appreciate that.
No executive session, right?
No executive session.
Motion adjourned.
A motion made and seconded to adjourn. Roll call please.
Patrick Kerla.
Yes.
Paul Weiser.
Yes.
Carol Torriello.
Yes.
Tom Harrigan.
Yes.
Jason Parry. Dean Valier.
Yes.
Sacha Pony. Excuse, John SZA.
Yes.